Good morning. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission for Thursday, February 11, 2021. We have a quorum of at least nine members present by my count. I believe we have 10 or 11 here. So quorum has been established. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 14, 2021. Steve Pearson, as always, thank you for taking such excellent minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January of 2021. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes have been approved. Let's see, swearing in of any guests wishing to speak. I don't believe we have any guests on our agenda this morning. Do we have any public comments this morning? Don't believe we have any any guests in our meeting. Okay. Can move on to announcements and updates. I know, I think there's one announcements. There's a couple announcements I had this morning that I wanted to make sure we were all aware of. The first one really quickly, I received very, in the last couple of weeks, a few of you have probably received these as well, but it was a recognition to the Athens County Regional Planning Commission from the U.S. Census Bureau on behalf of efforts to help with the 2020 census last year. I know the city also received one, and I'm sure several of you have also received them from all the work from the Athens County Complete Count Commission or Committee. On behalf of the Regional Planning Commission, I'll thank everybody who was actively involved with the complete count last year. It was no easy task, as we all know, but thank you for that. The second item I wanted to bring up, I think many of you are aware of as well, but ODOT is going to be having a public hearing coming up with respect to the US 33 Johnson Road intersection improvements. And I'm going to put some information on that in the chat, the link to the ODOT website if you haven't seen it. The public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, March 10 via an online format at 6:00 PM, and there'll be a presentation from ODOT followed by Q and A. So I think most of you probably received that, but if not, just so everybody's aware, that link I just put in the chat should work. I don't know if anybody had any comments on that or thoughts before we move on.
Well, the public hearing is about their decision, and their decision is to close the intersection and make it a cul-de-sac. So if people want to keep it open for a right turn, they're going to have to have a lot of comments because they're pretty satisfied with their decision right now.
Lenny, was this was this public hearing required or was it requested? Do you know?
We requested them to have a public hearing on their decision.
Okay.
But they already had the public hearing before they made their decision. But we've been chasing them to try and, you know, bring it up again so people get a chance to weigh in.
So is there a timeline on when the project is going to start?
It would start this year as soon as they go get the decision to go forward.
It just amazes me that they're going to shut off an access road that's been there since the road was put through that has Yeah, there's accidents, but there's probably a higher percentage of traffic there than like the one up the spur off of Route 13 682 above the plains. And then if you go on up to the Movies 10, they've had people die several times in that intersection, yet they don't look at those. It makes no sense. The letter that Jeff Maiden put together was excellently laid out on if you're going to do this, upgrade the intersection at 33 682 first. And it's like they're putting the cart before the horse.
I don't disagree with you, Warren, but remember their mission is to move traffic through, not to give local access. So that's when you start talking at the U.S. Highway, that's what they talk about, and 33 is a U.S. Highway.
But look what they've done at the Movies 10.
Oh, I understand. I don't think they ever should have given that cut to Movies 10, but that existed.
Why are they shutting that one off?
Good question. You know, they don't have a high school there saying, we've got drivers, and they haven't been pestered by people saying, close that intersection.
But has the high school formally said, we want it closed, or just people connected to the high school pushing this?
I think members of the Board of Education have, I don't know if they actually voted in a meeting, but I know members of the Board of Education have weighed in. So I'm assuming ODOT has looked at that. So the chair of that drive, I think, was the president at one point. So I know they wrote a letter.
Well, if you're concerned about it, just make sure you attend that meeting. I'm, who knows, it'll have much impact, but but it does say, Jack, to your question, it says, construction to begin in spring of 2021.
That's a quick turnaround. I mean, that's, they're not fooling around.
No, it's like they had it on their agenda and just kept it under the radar.
Yeah. Okay. Moving forward, the only other item I had for announcements, just wanted the members of the Regional Planning Commission to know that there is a new administrative assistant for the Regional Planning Commission. Chelsea McKee has moved on to a different position at the county, and Laura Olbers has been recently, I'm not sure she's been hired or appointed to this position. She was going to try to join us this morning, but I don't see her on here yet. But just so anybody knows, if you're emailing Chelsea for questions, she's going to forward it to Laura. As long as we're on the subject of that, I guess I should ask the commissioners if there's an update on the permanent position for the Regional Planning Commission.
The job's been posted and advertised, so we're just waiting for the respondents to come in, and we'll go through the hiring process.
Okay. Thanks, Lenny. Are there any additional announcements or updates before we move on?
Paul, Laura does have a county email address at this point, and it's it's just like everybody else's first initial last name at athensoh.org.
Thanks a lot.
L. Olbers, O.L.O.L.B.E.R.S.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, moving forward with new business this morning. I don't, do we have any new business on the agenda? Bob, is there any new business you needed to bring forward?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to old business. And with that, we can just start with our continuing discussions, the first being the US 50 corridor sewer expansion.
We have a pre-construction meeting this week, and one of the contractors is already starting his mobilization. He anticipates this month getting started. So we'll see what the weather does. Starting, I think it's really dependent on weather, but construction's going to be underway shortly.
Thanks. Thanks, Lenny. Anything additional on that from? If not, we can move on to electric aggregation. I see Luke on here as well as Chris.
Yeah, a couple of exciting things to report this month. First, I want to give you a running balance. Again, it's on our website. The public's have urged in checking it. But as of January 15, the Athens Public Solar Fund has a balance of $46,809.87. We get those payments middle of the month, so it's going to crest over $50,000 this month. So we'll be seeking public input pretty soon to help guide that process of where those dollars are allocated for which solar projects within the city limits those go on. Second, the regular community grants that Sopac does, the board approved this week $40,000 for the local match to go for a Department of Energy grant to help fund an electric bus. So that should be purchased in the months ahead, which is a small piece of that. Sopac provided $40,000 for that as well. And then lastly, as an early tease, we are working on green reports for individual communities. The data is going to be lagging a little bit based on meter reads, but just give you a tease for it. Back in October, the City of Athens, and we're doing this for all the communities, but the City of Athens alone, by having green, a green program for the energy, just in the month of October, that saved 1.7 million pounds of coal from being burned, which is the equivalent of 343 passenger cars being driven for a whole year. So we're going to have a lot more metrics like that for folks to see, but I think it's always great to have some real examples of what those decisions mean. And that should be a lot of fun. So look for that coming forward. That'll be posted on our website as well.
Thank you, Luke. Okay, moving forward, unless there's anything else on electric aggregation, don't see anybody volunteering to weigh in. Do we have any updates or information from the Athens County Land Bank?
Well, we're going to have a land bank board meeting next week, and we've got a group H of demolitions, which include two in Gloucester, two in Tremble. And I've been working with Gary or Greg Andrews, I don't see Greg here today, but we've been working with individuals through this workforce development programs that are, it's through Job and Family Services and HAPCAP. We've also been working with some folks from diversion, the Prosecutor's Office. And we've saved, we've been basically going out to these sites that are going to get demolished, and we've been doing things like saving bricks and scrapping metal and taking aluminum siding off. I know that we we work with McKee's Scrapyard, and they brought a metal box out there for us. And I know we had at least 942 pounds of aluminum. So that's going to be nice. And Integrated Services, they're buying the bricks, and they're going to use them in their, they're building a new duplex in Gloucester, and they're putting it in a community garden. So that's kind of neat. So working with Rural Action, Habitat for Humanity, and just basically before tearing these places down, saving everything we can out of them, and working with people. And it's been fun and dirty. And that's what I've been doing. But, you know, obviously, we're continuing the process of acquiring properties. We had some in the Board of Revisions that are, again, delayed, you know, that process, just, you know, things kind of move forward, then one step forward, two steps back. But we're just working away trying to get those properties obtained and then disposed of.
Chris, I've got a question. On the house on Clinton Street in the plains that the judge has put back for another continuance of keeping it listed, is that in guardianship?
Yeah, I believe Gary Hunter is acting on someone's behalf, I guess, in that. And that's part of the reason it's, I don't know all the details about that one, but I do know that it's, you know, we've had that as a project, and then it's just the process is just excruciatingly slow.
Well, you know, I know that neighbors there tried to buy that property, and it got bogged down to where they couldn't even purchase it. So it's like, if they're making a monthly fee to keep it in guardianship, it's going against the public's interest of what they're doing.
You know, a lot of times, there maybe had not been communication or something. Like, I know with the with this Board of Revisions case, we had, there was the infamous DBJ properties, which had six different abandoned properties. And one of them had a mortgage outstanding by a bank that had, it was this one bank, then it got transferred to another bank, that the new bank didn't get the notification. And now it's like you have to start all over again. So again, I don't know the details. I know that Gary Hunter's involved. I think it's coming to a head, though, on that one, soon.
Let's hope so, because it's an eyesore.
Yeah.
This is Steve Pearson. Judge McCarthy granted a 90-day extension for Mr. Hunter to sell the property. So as soon as that 90-day period is up, then the court will go ahead and take action on that. Just so everybody knows, two, almost two years ago, Athens Township put in an application to the land bank to obtain that property. And our intent was then to donate it to Habitat for Humanity. There are actually three lots there, three separate building lots. And now with zoning in place, the only thing that could be done in that zoning district is basically single-family homes. So you won't see the piled-up small apartments, you won't see, you know, the multiple manufactured homes there now. So in any case, there have been a lot of applications for that property. It's just been held up, you know, with legal maneuvering, essentially. But hopefully, it'll come to a head here in about two and a half months.
Steve, is there any progress then on the, is it Elm Street, the property at three, and then the 682 property that had been the restaurant?
Those, I've been working with Rick Wasserman on that, too, because there was some tax delinquency involved on those properties. It's a, again, it's a very complicated situation because there are about six different parties of interest in the property. And to make things happen, you have to show that you've notified all the parties of interest. What I have been doing in practical terms, and so has Mr. Wasserman, we're dealing directly with one of the descendants of the original owners of the property. It's an elderly lady. She lives outside of Lancaster. And she has a nephew that also has interest in the property. But those are the only two really that I can, that I've ever been able to contact. So again, it's one of those things where you just try to prod people essentially to do the right thing, and they talk to you and say, yeah, we'll take care of it. Then the next thing you know, nothing happens. So to get that down is probably going to take some pretty significant legal action.
I noticed there, a few weeks ago, it appeared someone was living in that building again on 682.
Right, the building right on the corner. I've checked with the post office before. There's mail delivered there. There's water and sewer service there. So but unlike the City of Athens, the plains or Athens Township has no property maintenance code. So, you know, if you look at something and it's an eyesore, unless it's a health situation, you know, there's not much that can be done with it. Now, we do have, with the new zoning code, the ability to clean up properties that are nuisance because of just the exterior condition. And I've been having some short discussions with Jack Pepper about that because it seems to overlap with some of the responsibilities that the Health Department has right now. So more than likely, that will be the first, the first thing you see happening is the Health Department will be helping the township with some of the enforcement of the zoning code. One of the things Jack's concerned about, too, is when push comes to shove, you actually have to start filling out legal paperwork, going to court for noncompliance. Then all of a sudden, you're taking a lot more time. There's really no funding available for that. So it, you know, you're going to be pulling money just from the general fund of the township to do that kind of thing. It's all money going out, nothing coming in. So it's going to be hard here getting the zoning part of this up and running. So hopefully, it'll be a little patience, going to take a little time. We do, though, now have identified three people for the Board of Zoning Appeals, so we can actually hear cases if we have a refusal or a conditional use that comes up. We still have enough members seated on the zoning commission in case any changes need to be recommended. So we're making, we're making some progress on that. I actually have mocked up a, an application for a gentleman who wants to build necessary structures. So little steps. And, but no, the what you're, the house you're talking about on Elm, for Elm Street is, that's a whole separate matter that we've been, the township's been dealing with here for probably about two years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you on that, Chris and Steve and Warren. Unless there's anything else on the land bank, we'll move on to the Athens or the COVID-19 health emergency. And I know Jack is on the call. Jack, do you have any updates or info to share this morning?
We're actually at Heritage Hall today, doing roughly 500 second dose follow-ups. So we continue to sort of plow through the vaccine that's showing up on site. Good news is, is that Fruit Pharmacy is coming on board as a vaccinator starting next week. They, their allocation is roughly, it's similar to everybody else, which is about 100 doses a week to start with. So so I think that they're working through the process of where all the rest of us have been, and that the second that you're publicly acknowledged as a vaccinator, your phone system crashes and people show up at your front door and everything else. So we are, we are currently booked for the rest of the week. We have a clinic tomorrow, roughly 600 people coming in, 200 second doses, 400 first doses. And then next week, we will be giving roughly 900 doses again. 500 of those are second round follow-ups. 400 of those will be first round doses. We've, we've basically exclusively transitioned to Pfizer vaccine here. That that sort of shifts our scheduling around a little bit because that's a three-week wait period instead of a four-week wait period. But Athens County really continues to set the standard here in southeast Ohio. Quite frankly, we're, we're setting the standard around the state, most of our metrics, if you look at them, we're in the top five counties in the state in percentage of 80-year-olds vaccinated, percentage of 70-year-olds vaccinated. All of our K through 12 educators that wanted vaccine have gotten it. Virtually, all of our DD population has gotten it with, with the exception of a few here and there. So so we're really doing a pretty good job of, of, you know, crossing people off the list. We're currently in birth year 1950 on our, on our interest list. My math is not, not, not super strong, but but we're at least approaching the 60s, which will be good for us to get out of the 70 age group and 80 age group and into the 60 age group. And what we found is, is that as we've worked through our interest list in the early onset of placing phone calls, a large percent of those, percentage of those people were getting vaccine elsewhere, which is great. But it was a little frustrating because one in every, you know, 30 calls we would make would result in an appointment. And and now we're transitioning into a place where most of the folks that we're contacting are wanting appointments, which makes, you know, the callback part of this process a whole lot easier for us. So we, you know, are real excited and, and, you know, believe that this is the first next step into whatever new normal looks like. The CDC yesterday made a major pivot. And and folks that are fully immunized, two weeks after second dose, are no longer required to quarantine or isolate in any way, shape, or form if they've been exposed. So that does not mean that you don't get to wear a mask or maintain social distancing, et cetera. But but what it does mean is, is that, you know, virtually, you won't be impacted if you are exposed to a COVID-19 case, which prior to yesterday, they were still asking people to quarantine, even if they were fully vaccinated. So that was a, a major, a major pivot. And we were really excited about that because that's sort of the carrot we can dangle to the public is, you know, if you get the vaccine, you avoid quarantine. So that's my update, and I'm happy to take questions.
Chime in real quick, and just, just all kinds of praise goes to Health Department. It's just been so impressive to see you guys in action under a great deal of stress and demand and all, and all of that, to be able to run these clinics so smoothly. One little correction, we have had all of our individuals that we serve at the County Board of DD with under, with DD and underlying health issues. Those, those individuals have all been vaccinated under 1B. But we do still have a number of individuals with DD who don't have underlying health issues in conjunction with that, who are still interested. And I'm sure they'll eventually come up in the phasing, but I just wanted to make that, that little correction and the detail of who and who in the DD world has been vaccinated. But again, just really appreciate all the work you and your team are doing, Jack. Just keep it up, and and we'll help as much as we can.
Hey, Jack, this is Steve Pearson. I know you can't give us, you know, a lot of detail on this, but adverse side effects, have there been many? Or does everything, has no one had any adverse effect from an injection?
Well, I think that your definition of adverse side effect impacts that statement. You know, some of the stuff that we're seeing, we are seeing some side effects, and they're all listed in the, you know, in the EUA. You know, certainly with the first dose, we're seeing folks that have site soreness, so injection site soreness, your arm's pretty sore for a couple of days. And and we're also hearing a little bit in the way of maybe some heat, you know, like your, the injection site feels warm to the, to the touch, which, you know, that's all, that's all pretty typical. The the second dose, you know, in in theory, you know, your body would have started to build antibodies after the first dose. So when you, when you shock your system, the second go-round, you know, if your body is doing what it's supposed to, in all likelihood, you're going to have a more significant response. And and we've got folks all over the board. I think that site soreness is still pretty universal with the the second dose. And and we have gotten some feedback about maybe groggy or tired, some body aches. But but generally speaking, onsite, you know, if you're talking about anaphylactic reaction, we have not had any onsite at any of our clinics. And, you know, to date, we have not had to file any VAERS reports, which is the reporting mechanism that you use to report to the CDC if you feel like there's been a, a reaction that's worth the manufacturing companies to know about.
Jack, Ms. the mayor, just a question, too, with regards to the vaccine. And I've seen firsthand how you guys are operating down at Heritage Hall, and it's absolutely amazing what you're able to accomplish, especially last Friday, when you pushed through, you know, 1,100 K through 12 faculty and, and staff, which that's, that's massive. But but here's my question. Do you have any updates as to the conversation of, at some point in time, doing away with the 15-minute wait period because they've identified that anaphylactic reactions is so slim that the, the kind of the pinch point in the process is that 15-minute wait? Any, any updates as to whether that'll ever be lifted?
I, I do think that as we move far further into the vaccination process, that they will certainly make that consideration because that is definitely a major pinch point. In particular, it becomes a pinch point when you're doing outdoor drive-through clinics because you, you have to manage people for 15 minutes in their vehicles, you know, after they've come through a drive-through. Now, we're very fortunate in that the Fair Board and the Health Department have a very good working relationship, and they have offered up their space to us, and they have that infield space that you can use to, to park people and manage. And I think that eventually, once this facility becomes occupied in, in late spring, early summer, you know, we're going to have um, you know, we're going to have to make a transition out of here. I just don't think it's realistic that, you know, we will be able to continue here. I could be wrong, um, but but that's just our anticipation. So we actually used some funds from uh, the the township um, to purchase uh, some equipment um, to better position us to to be more efficient in terms of our drive through clinics. Um, and so we're grateful to the township for their for thinking of us as they were trying to figure out how to best use their CARES Act money and um, uh, we feel like we're going to be ready to to make that transition um, uh, to drive through scenarios. But boy, it would be nice if if that 15 minute wait period was lifted by the time we get around to that because it it really is the bottleneck point at in the process. But but short answer is um, no movement, but I know it continues to be a conversation.
Great, thank you. Jack, is there any forecast on when you're going to be hitting the the like 60 to 65 age groups since they've been going down in in five year increments or 10 years or whatever? A lot of friends that I've been hearing from is, you know, there's no, they can't find out any information. Have you got any projection on when that might be?
No, so so the the unfortunate reality of this entire situation is that we really are at the mercy of the federal government. The federal government, Operation Warp Speed establishes big picture, most of the criteria um, as guidance. And then the states individually, uh, the governor's office and the Health Department of Health um, further refine that or pick and choose uh, which which categories they want to, they they're going to choose to focus on. Um, I do know that this week, the governor uh, delayed the onboard of those with congenital defects. That was supposed to start next week. Um, that got delayed this week. Just because there there are, there's still a massive number of people in in the 1B category that we're trying to get to. Um, I suspect, Warren, that that the next step will be a a five year increment to 60 to 65. I just don't know when that's going to happen. I I I don't envision a a space where they just say, okay, everybody 18 to 64, off you go. Um, I I I just, I I just don't see a a a space where that's going to happen.
And and I did see where um, the effort nationwide now is to bring on more drug local drugstores and Rite Aid was one of them mentioned. And I think Walgreens and I can't think what else, but with fruit coming on and if you could get Walgreens helping too, that should increase the number that we can see getting treated to.
Yeah, I I I um, I have my own personal opinions on that. Um, I, you know, I'm a I'm a public health guy and and, you know, public health is built to do mass vax. Um, it's it's what we practice, it's what we do. Um, I, you know, I am, you know, I'm all in, I get it. I want shots in arms at the end of the day. Um, but I do think that some of our pharmacies are really struggling with uh, running large scale vaccination style clinics. Um, and they're really feeling the pinch now because not only are they having to run first dose clinics, but now they're having to run second dose clinics. Um, you you know, and and those spaces, you know, you can maybe seat four or five at a time. Um, I don't know if you've been in a pharmacy in February, but it it I'm frightened that I'm just getting the right pills in my bottle because it's darn busy all the time, you know? And and so I I I think you're right and that it's exciting that there's another vaccinator in town. Um, it is another avenue for people to get vaccinated. Um, but I would tell you that that, you know, we did 1100 last week on in one day and I think we could double that number and still get it done in a day in this facility. So, um, you know, I I have mixed feelings, uh, but but you are correct. Um, you know, they are bringing on some more uh, rural, local pharmacies, uh, you know, in the in the in the bigger picture effort. And um, hey, if we can get more vaccine in Athens County, I don't care what it looks like.
Right, and and it's a shame they still haven't been able to improve your communication effort with a private entities on, you know, who's getting them or whatever. So you're more up to date as well, since you're supposed to be the hub core in the county.
Yeah, yeah, I I think as an after action item, um, that's going to be a biggie. Public health is is, you know, generally speaking, pretty upset that, um, you know, we practiced a centralized model for the better part of two decades. And then when when uh, the actual event arrives, they they choose a decentralized healthcare model that that we, you know, quite frankly, haven't hadn't even, you know, hadn't even discussed at any level um, as we were preparing. So anyways, good, good item for after action.
Thank you.
Jack, thank you for the update. Any further questions or comments on this matter? It's good to hear some good news coming out, Jack. If not, we will move on to uh, our planners' report. Bob Eichenberg, do you have anything this morning?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, just a couple items, Paul. Uh, I continue to spend the majority of my time on on four main areas. Uh, and really three of them are grant related. Uh, the paddling enhancement grant, that's a paddle access in Geysville. Uh, the Chansey Bike Way Extension Phases One and Two and the Bike Way Resealing Project. And all of those are largely grant funded and uh, other than a few relatively minor bumps, they continue to be on schedule. Uh, the other thing I've been doing is just routine floodplain and subdivision uh, issues that come up. And then um, Chelsea and I have been working a little bit with Laura on some office procedure issues and just making sure Laura gets up to speed as quickly as possible. Uh, and and so far, she's working out great and I welcome her. The only other thing I wanted to discuss was a a more general planning issue that that is kind of interesting. Um, and I I wouldn't normally even bring this up, but Tim Waren called yesterday and I don't know if Tim's on on the meeting, but uh, it 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 just got me thinking it's worth a mention. He called and asked if I was aware of uh, or had had issued any development permits for um, some sort of development, uh, maybe a bed and breakfast uh, in what is called an inundation area below the Fox Lake Dam. And uh, these are are interesting situations because several of our flood control lakes have what are called inundation maps. And in the very, very rare uh, circumstance of a dam failure, these would be areas that are bigger than the mapped floodplains that would be inundated. And so there is some effort on the part of the Margaret Creek Conservancy, who is combined with the Hockin Conservancy District to produce maps and and keep these areas as free as possible from development. The issue comes up that beyond the flood control area, the map floodplain, the county really doesn't have any control over these areas. And so the the best we can probably do is just provide good information to the development community, which would include banks, uh, real estate folks, attorneys that deal with these issues. Um, just that these inundation areas exist and um, we could probably do a better job publishing these. Um, I'm not sure we even have any digital copies of these maps. So this is kind of a to do for maybe the next planner when or or the uh, Emergency Management Agency to come up with with digital versions of these maps and get them out there. So people are at least aware. And um, a-again, it's it's a super rare circumstance, but with the climate issues, we're starting to see um, anything's possible. So I think awareness is a good thing. That's all I have.
Bob, are you aware that there's already some cabins uh, below the dam?
That were recently built, Charlie?
Yeah, I just said a tank is summer, fall, just right damn near at the base of the dam, just, you know, property right beside the dam.
Well, and I'll look into that because they could well be in the mapped floodplain because there is a map floodplain below the dam. And in that case, uh, technically a permit should have been obtained. We're a little bit um, hamstrung in that oftentimes we're not aware of development till someone lets us know. And I'll have to look into that because if it is in the map floodplain, the county may have um, an opportunity to at least weigh in and and make it as safe as possible. But uh, if it's outside that map floodplain, Charlie, then we really don't have any say in the matter. So I'll let you know, I'll I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any additional questions or comments for Bob?
Yeah, I would say Hobbs on the Hockey Conservancy District with Tim tackle and increase the assessment uh, in the Margaret Creek Conservancy District. One of the reasons we did that was because uh, one of the dams, and I can't remember Tim, which one it was. Um, substantially, it might have been um, Lake Snowden. But people had located below the dam um, in that intervening period, the 50 years since the dams were built. And that changed the rating on the dam. So the federal government was coming back and saying dam improvements were going to have to be made. Uh, because the the safety rating, and I don't remember the different ratings, but but it had to do with the level of construction and and the factor of safety. Every engineering project has a factor of safety. And by those those residents locating um, below the dam and the number of people that are are built in that area um, triggers a requirement as to whether, you know, the dam needs to be rebuilt or strengthened. And so in that particular case, this might have been Tim before you on the board, but it was back. I don't know if they've come back or not, but it it requires.
They've up, they've upgraded at least two of the dams now to to class one structures. And that's where the the rehabilitation comes in. And and Fox Lake is one of them. That was what kind of brought the whole thing on. The guy from NRCS was there inspecting the dam that they're going to rehabilitate and said, what's this? What is going on here?
Yeah, yeah, and in our, that's right, it's NRCS, it's within their realm. But if I remember right, there wasn't a lot of funding, we had no match. At Margaret Creek, we had about $3,000 a year to to maintain five dams. And that triggered, we were taking money out of Hockey Conservancy District, which was paid from a different group um, of people uh, as an assessment to their real estate taxes. So so we initiated when I was on the board. Tim, it was about the time you got on the board, I think, when we were starting that reassessment. I can't remember, but um, but we raised about $200,000 a year through through looking at the benefits of those dams and the people that lived in the Margaret Creek District. So they became as about as soluble as uh, about solvent, I guess, not soluble, but about as solvent as uh, uh, Hockey Conservancy District because of that reassessment. But the purpose was to use that money to match potential grants uh, to for dam rehabilitation. That's what we were looking at long term.
And some of that money is now becoming available and that's the reason the people are down there doing. We have the uh, it's an 80% match, so we're only going to have to put in 20%. But they're just concerned that we're allowing people to build where they shouldn't be in in their eyes.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know if the Regional Plenary Commission could could establish, could work in conjunction with uh, the NRCS to help control that anyway, if you've got dam structures that old. That, yeah, because there's more and more people locate immediately below the dam and it's going to up the pressure for Conservancy District. Those are pretty big chunks of money to I mean, if it was a 25% match, you're probably looking at depends on the size of the dam project, be $5 million project. So all of a sudden, you're looking at a million and a half dollars or something to match a project like that. That money always has to come locally, the the match part, so it's going to impact long term cost of your organization, I guess, is what.
It becomes a zoning issue and probably the only control that this the county would have, uh, or the township would be to adopt zoning in those areas outside the floodplain to the edge of the inundation area. And I mean, that could be done, but we we know the issues of trying to get any kind of zoning established.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but I I know that that uh, long term, there's going to, it's going to trigger a bunch of damn projects, a bunch of damn projects.
Well, I eventually, we feel that all of them are going to be upgraded to class one dams. And and that's that's where everything's going.
Okay, I just want to bring that up. On that, uh, moving forward, uh, next item on our agenda is our uh, silly city, village, township and organizational reports. Uh, we can begin with the county commissioners. Charlie, Lenny, Chris, do any of you have anything to contribute? Or report?
Um, I guess I could report that our Athens EMS station uh, will be up and operational, I'd say, in the next week or two. So um, we had to get a jumps through, jump through some hoops due to a generator that was onsite that kind of delayed things a little bit, but um, yep, that's coming along and and this is again, going to be the first net zero energy building in the region, so real excited about this building.
Charlie or Lenny, anything additional?
I do not.
Nothing else, Paul.
Thank you. Uh, we can go to Athens, Mayor Patterson.
Uh, thanks, Paul. A few things to report, uh, Mayor's Partnership for Progress is meeting this afternoon at noon and we have a very special guest on this, on the agenda right off the bat at noon. Will be Lieutenant Governor Huestad will be speaking to the group. So that's great uh, for MPP. Um, Stimson Avenue Project is still moving along. Um, anticipated completion would be the end of October. I know it's a real pain, but bear with us as it's all road improvement projects. West Union still under design, that's a 2022 project, which will be from Schaefer to the uh, West Union Bridge, the toe of the bridge. Uh, and potentially the Herald Drive connector between West Union and West State Street, uh, which we were invited, I think I've mentioned this before, invited to apply for an ARC Access Road grant uh, on that. Uh, Uptown Improvement Project that is going to be make, uh, we received a grant to enhance Washington State Street between College and Congress. That's a 2023, 24 project to where it'll look essentially have the same look and feel as West Union between Congress and Court Street. Um, OPWC Round 35 um, wrapped up uh, last week and we were very pleased. A big thank you to to Jeff Maiden, uh, Tim Waren. Um, Scott Frank attended as well, um, Bob Eichenberg served as the fifth member, uh, and who am I blanking on, guys? who am I blanking on, guys?
Ted Linskey?
Ted Linskey, thank you, was on that as well. We were able to get the number one on the list was the Nelsonville Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Two. And then I'm going to steal some of Amy's thunder, sorry, Mayor Renner. The Chancy Village of Chancy received $149,000 for street improvements, and then Athens County, $400,000 for county paving. It's been a long time since we've had three projects come across the finish line like that. County Engineer is going to put together a meeting. We're going to start planning early this year for round around 36, which would be fiscal year 2023. So start lining ourselves up to where we do as well as some of the other counties. Just as an example, Meskegan ended up getting four projects across the finish line to in excess of $1.3 million in LTIP or skip funding. I think that's pretty much all I have, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy, Mayor of Chancy, are you on the call still? Amy Renner?
I am. I'm just listening in, so I have nothing to contribute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Garrett, Mayor Guzman?
Good morning. Amesville had council meeting last night. What I'm going to do, most of our discussion was about master plan for the parks, Gifford Park. I'm going to put in the chat some links. One organization that pays for community orchards was discussed. The other organization was the Orton Foundation, the Heart and Soul Plannings. Planning process that they use, there's grants for up to $10,000 for small communities for that. I'll put that link in there. And lastly, I'm including the link for the Facebook page for Age Friendly Athens County. I'm serving on several of the committees for Age Friendly Athens County. Getting ready to do the survey among participants in Athens County to see what they feel is needed to make the county an age-friendly community as we move forward with this AARP and WHO initiative. So as many of you as can join that Facebook page and give comments and follow the activities that are going on there, I think the make the process even better. So I'll put that in the chat right now, and that's my update.
Thank you, Gary. Tim, do you have anything to share?
All I got to say, I had to unmute myself. We're all consumed with the snow removal right now, so kudos to all the people that run snowplows because we've worked them hard lately. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tim. Let's see, Molly Fitzgerald, do you have anything from the Economic Development Council?
I'm glad you called on me, Paul. I was just about to say I have to head out for another meeting, but really quickly, I just want to give up an update on the EDC strategic plan. So that has been rolled out. It hasn't been officially approved by our board, hoping to do that next month, but it includes a lot. It's very comprehensive. It includes a lot on site development, housing, broadband, you know, so I'm just looking forward to sharing that comprehensive strategic plan with the group once it's been approved. So that's my only update.
Thank you, Molly. Athens County, Ben Abfeld?
Good morning, everyone. Not too much to report today. Finished up getting tax bills together for the Treasurer's Office. I believe they sent those out to their smart bill company, so they should be showing up in your mailboxes soon. The due date is March 29th. Gives you a little bit of time to get your money piled together and get those sent in. Other than that, it's kind of just business as usual. Our homestead continuing forms getting ready to go out. We've got CAUV apps out and coming back. Dog tags have been extended to July 1st without penalty. Believe that was due to a House bill. Lenny, correct me if I'm wrong, and then the Commissioners approved that extension. Other than that, just kind of business as usual. Rolling with the snow.
Thanks, Ben. Jeff Maiden, County Engineer?
Yeah, we're following up on what the mayor's mentioned. We we got three projects funded, OPWC, and Steve and I were talking the other day about it. I've been to counties here for eight years, and Meskegan County gets three projects funded every year. We'll look a little deeper into how they're doing that, but I know from conversations with engineers that that live and work in that district that they they get together in January, February every year, and they plan their projects out. They're combining projects. And by doing that, sometimes gain more points, but they they bring more people to the table. All their projects, most of them are for every year that I've been the County Engineer, they've brought in $1.2 million. I think without exception, and usually their fourth projects are just below the line. So, you know, we'd like to do something like that, too, but it's going to take some coordination and some active planning to be able to do that. I think the whole process in the past, there's been a lot of I don't get into how some of the scoring's done, but it's we've looked at some of it, and it's some of it's a little bit crazy. We've been working on a lot of different things, like Tim Warren mentioned. You know, we're putting a lot of overtime in. I was out Sunday morning driving the roads, trying to decide whether we're going to send crews out or not for two hours from 7:30 to 9:30. The highways were slick. We went out, but we tried to we've used so much salt this year. We started with a full shed. It's the first year I've been here since we built the salt barns. We had 3,000 ton, 2,500 to 3,000 ton in our shed at the beginning of the year, and it's about empty. So able to get on the ODOT contract this week. We didn't, if you vie on the ODOT contract, we've been doing it since my second year when we found out about it. We get a greatly reduced price, but we're also committed to take 90% of the amount. So if we commit to 3,000, you know, 2,000 ton, then we've got to commit to take 1,800 ton. If it didn't snow this year, like the year before, well, then we would have 1,800 ton on the ground just disintegrating as it rains. So but I was able to get on the contract last week for 1,100 tons. So we got 1,100 ton of salt coming in, and we're we're supporting Athens Township with that. And a lot of the other townships come in and buy salt from us now. So we've got a half a dozen townships that we supply salt to on a spot basis and sell at our cost, get them loaded and measured and all that. So we expect more snow coming up this weekend. We've got we've got the paving project Steve mentioned, and I'm working on a document now for County Engineer Association on what our needs are, but we're right now in about a 30-year cycle on our asphalt. If we get one paving job a year, a $400,000 project, we're going to be able to pave our asphalt roads about once every 30 years. You know, back in the day when I started, which was a lot of years ago, we would pave roads about once every seven years was the typical cycle. So I'm looking hard at can we use additional parts of our budget to pave asphalt roads? The other issue is our chip and seal roads, our cycle and chip and seals. I haven't really figured out cycle and chip and seals because they're so bad that we've got to spend a lot of money to bring them up to we're spending about $25,000 a mile just in asphalt to be able to level before we chip and seal. And so we're looking at the whole program right now, trying to decide. Got three bridges planned for this year. We're going to build ourselves. I've got four in the federal process that'll be built using federal dollars, but those are down the road. They're typically five, six years out. And one of them that recently got funded was the reconstruction of the Blackwood Covered Bridge. There's going to be a lot of, it'll be a public process involved in that. That's five, six years out. But we're going to want to preserve that bridge, but I don't think we want to keep it in its current location. Oftentimes, that bridge can be moved adjacent to the new bridge or so forth, but it's not serving its purpose anymore. We can't get even small trucks across. It's got a five-ton load limit on it. And on the other side of that bridge is Mexico County and difficult to get to. It's very rural. So that's, those are kind of some of the general things. I also mentioned we're going to have to have an Athens County TID meeting, so I'm working on that. Going to be getting hold of everybody and start looking at the TID program this year. Transportation Improvement District started a few years ago, so the big thing, I guess, I've talked to Warren about and Lenny and is and ODOT is the closure of the Johnson Road, and that's coming up pretty quickly. The complete closure of that road, I've got a guy who did a traffic study for us a few years ago. We're coming out of Cincinnati, and now he's got his own business, and I've had him looking at that for a year. And he's a PTOE, a Professional Traffic Operations Engineer. And as well as a PE, but he specializes in that area, and I've had him updating the traffic accidents. ODOT is is advertising that project as 26 accidents since 2009. I don't know that we've had a single accident that resulted in an injury for anybody who's turned right from Johnson Road on the US 33 or turned south from US 33 into Johnson Road. I don't know if we've had one injury accident. We've had two accidents, one in 2015 and one in 2016 that were angle accidents where people pulled out and got hit. So I've asked him to update all that information just so and just to give us a professional recommendation. I don't think it's going to matter. But I've been told in Clinton County, there was a similar project, and the citizens that live there had a public meeting like this, and everybody rose up and said, we don't really want this, and ODOT actually reversed their course. So I, my inclination is it's a hard, it's very difficult to take a hard position on it. I've taken the position that the center median should absolutely be closed. Should have probably been closed. We resisted that in 2013. That was probably a mistake. Although we went five years without any accidents after we we made, did some countermeasures in 2013, and there were no left-hand turn accidents in four and a half years. We were monitoring it every year. I was talking to Debbie Fout about it. But some things changed in 2018 and 19, and so I think it was, you remember, there's a lot of construction out there. There were yellow barrels on the highway for a long time out there, but I think it's a lot of it's related to distracted driving. I think I saw one incident. I've got video of some of those incidents, and a lady was turning left through the Johnson Road intersection, and she T-boned a car coming south. How do you T-bone a car coming south? It wasn't like you couldn't get across the intersection. You drove into the side of a car coming south. And so that's what we're faced with. I think those, I think all those medians are going to be closed. I think it needs to be closed there, and probably most of the medians need to be closed based on what I see, but I wrote a four-page letter and sent it out to ODOT. I copied Warren Jeffers and the Commissioners on it. And just to kind of summarize that, that, yeah, absolutely. I actually called them and inquired about the closure of the median two years ago, which kind of prompted the whole process. So I guess you care for what you ask for because you might get a lot more, you know? But I might have actually initiated the whole thing. So now I'm on both sides of it. I might have initiated it now. Now believing that really the right turn in, right turn out should still be there, so. It's a bad situation because I feel also if I'm the only one pushing back, I don't have any support on it. And then that happens, then I'll be responsible, personally responsible for anybody does get hurt there. So it's easy just to sit back and not take a position. That's always the easiest solution, right? To say, hey, you can blame it on ODOT. Hey, ODOT did that. But there's businesses impacted, and I guess the real issue is how dangerous is it really? You know, if you've been 10 years without a single accident related to an injury, is that so dangerous you need to close it? Because somebody could pull out there, and with the demographic of the the high school students that do use that intersection, I mean, that potential exists. I've got three kids who've all used that intersection. So it's tough for me to say definitively and take a real definitive position, but sure, I would really be interested to get any feedback from anybody in this meeting, what their position is on this. We can certainly back off if it's in general agreement that the thing ought to be closed. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff, this is Steve Pearson. Could you verify for everybody, too, and you and I have talked about this, that there are 2,000 to 2,400 vehicles that use that at-grade intersection every day?
No, there's that many that turn right and go to Athens every day. There's more traffic there. We did a count over a two-week period. We counted all days, and the average on any day of the week, including the weekend, is 2,176 vehicles turn right from Johnson Road onto 33. There's less traffic on the 682 entrance ramp at the Plains. There's less traffic than that. On ODOT's Tim's side, you can see their numbers. It's roughly the same, but ODOT's a little less than 2,000. So what you're talking about doing is doubling the traffic essentially because how much, I don't think much of that traffic, there's no way to determine how much is going to go 682 south into Athens. I think very little will go that way. If you're turning right to go to Athens, if you're going to what, you know, East State Street or Central Athens, are you going to go? I guess it's going to be a choice. I live in the Plains. I'm not going to be going 682 into Athens. I'll be most likely going to 682. I mean, I won't be going 682 into the I clarify that into the Union Street State Route 56 exit. I'll most likely go north and get on the highway and come in that way. That's the easiest access for me into town. Easy to come in on Stimson Avenue. Probably during construction, I'll definitely be coming into Stimson Avenue. Because my brother's running that project. I want to see what he's doing. I'll make sure he's doing the right thing down there.
And just for comparison, too, when Route 56 was closed, coming in from New Marshfield into town?
Yeah.
State Route, there were 4,000 trips a day, correct?
Yeah, well, that, there's about 8,500 vehicles a day that were, on average, going out 8,700, something like that on 56, so I'm not sure what numbers were actually being diverted onto your township road, but there was yeah, so it's, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of traffic. You're adding another.
I guess what I'm trying to illustrate is that simple little intersection there by the messenger has a huge amount of traffic, and then now it's all going to be diverted up to the existing interchange, which is, I don't know if any of you use it very often. I use it all the time. You just about break your neck trying to turn your head to see if anybody's coming because of the the way the ramps are aligned with the highway. So that whole idea of possibly rebuilding 682 intersection, I think, is a good recommendation if you're going to force all that traffic up there. Another 2,000, 2,500 vehicles a day into that interchange.
Yeah, and ODOT's looked at that. They've split that traffic. I don't know how much of that traffic was split and sent to Union Street 56 versus how much was diverted to, and they're using hourly, they're not looking at total volume. They're looking at hourly, peak hourly volumes. But the thing is with the 682, I've recommended they really take a hard look at that intersection, rebuild it because you've got two, you've got two you have two subdivision roads, one that Circle Drive that Warren Jeffers lives in, and Whispering Pines on the other side. And both of those subdivision roads come right into the center of those intersections. And so you've got a traffic light on the southbound lane, and the subdivision road is a frontage road that runs immediately parallel to your exit ramp. It comes into that light where people are sitting at the stop bar is the point at which that subdivision enters that intersection. And on the other side, you've got Circle Drive coming in, and he's trying to make a right turn. It comes in between the two ramps. It comes in between the northbound ramp and the southbound exit. That's crazy. It would never build that today. It would never be look anything like that today. And it wouldn't be allowed to be built today, the Circle Drive entrance. So that all needs to be rebuilt. We recommend, or I recommended, and really, it was first proposed to me by the Traffic Operations Engineer, is to build roundabouts at each end of that bridge, like they did at 674, to make an investment into that interchange and put a roundabout at each end. That way, your roundabouts can pick up That way your, your roundabouts can pick up your subdivision traffic along with all the other. And the other issues that, that turned to 682 at Chancy, we just had a fatality there last May, but we've had a lot of fatalities at that intersection. It's, I think it's far more dangerous coming south, and ODOT's not closing that. They're not closing the median, they're not, and, and I remember a 17-year-old girl that was killed there a few years ago from Vinton County that tried to make that, go into that intersection, make a left-hand turn. And there was just a fatality last year there, and I think, but I've been told that they can't close that because it creates too much traffic at the, at the Johnson, at the 682 intersection in the Plains. So they're not closing that intersection where we've had more fatality. I, I don't know, we're looking at the whole picture and trying to, I, I just see it as an opportunity. If they made a major investment in that interchange in the north end of the Plains would be the best solution, because then that could enable you to close the Johnson Road intersection and, and be able to get traffic through the Plains. But I think it's going to create all kinds of congestion issues for the high school. I don't think anybody really recognizes what that's going to look like when it's done. By the same token, I feel like I'm out on a limb because I, as a public official, Lenny has supported me. He's, he's made a statement that he supports keeping Johnson Road open, and in our conversations, he spoke pretty, pretty strongly about it. So not, not keeping the median open, we're not talking about that left-hand turn, we're going to close the median. We agree 100% with that, but, but it's the other, and there's other things that could be done there. ODOT can make a very small investment and add a deceleration lane coming south, but they don't want to make that investment because their long-term goal is to close them all and have nothing but, to close all at-grade intersections between Athens and Columbus. And, and it's a worthy goal. It's a worthy goal for a safety point of view, but, but I, I don't know in some rural areas like Fairfield County and Hocking County, how that's going to happen. That's, that's Super America on the right, by, by Carroll is now Winchester is really, actually been closed 10 years ago probably, but that's another issue altogether. But anyways, we'll take up any more time.
We've heard from two of the Commissioners. Charlie, where do you stand on it?
Warren, I don't think he's on anymore.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Steve Pearson, do you have anything to share this morning?
No, don't have anything additional.
Thank you, Steve. Boone, Troy?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things here. Something that I kind of noted here when Bob was actually talking about the properties, cabins going down at the bottom of the dam. We're actually working on some processes here to try to figure out some conversations we've been having about managing all of the new properties that are coming in. We've become keenly aware through last year, and it looks like kind of moving into the future that there'll be a continuance of vacation properties being built, cabins, Airbnb-style things kind of throughout the county. And there's, it's, it's been a conversation going on for several years now about how we are coordinating the management of those and getting communications out to those folks. So I just wanted to mention that. I think that's going to be a continuous conversation with multiple agencies involved. Rural Action and the Visitors Bureau right now are doing kind of a grassroots effort of reaching out to those folks and keeping a management list of what properties are going up. So maybe as we continue through that, we can pull on some other folks from this, this meeting as well that might be able to give some input. Or if we have those construction type of communications that need to go to those folks, maybe we could do some sort of a partnership there as well. The other, I had two other things. One is the Visitors Bureau is going through a complete restructure process of policies and procedures for our office and our operations. They're very outdated, so we're working with our board going through bylaws, policies and procedures manuals for our office in general. The other piece of this is that we have a state-level Visitors Bureau meeting, and the Governor actually will be a representative there during that meeting next week to discuss what the budgetary items will look like for recovery and tourism related to the next year. So that's kind of a big one for us that we have coming up next week. So those are the major things. And if anyone, anybody has any interest in kind of communicating with me about the outline of those vacation properties, please let me know.
Charlie, I thought you had logged off, and Warren had a question for you. I don't know if you can respond or not.
Okay.
Okay. I think Warren was curious of your thoughts on the Johnson Road 33 issue.
I don't think it should be closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. But thank you, Charlie. Luke Salfredge, do you have anything additional? I don't remember if I called on you, and I apologize for that.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Jack, do you have anything additional from the Health Department?
No, sir.
Okay. For the good of the order, is there anybody who wants to speak who has not spoken or has any last items to share?
I have one additional question. Could we please share the meeting about Johnson Road? I recall earlier in the conversation here, there was a, a meeting where we could kind of voice our opinion. Could we maybe put that in the box or communicate through email?
It should be in the chat, Boone, but I'll, I'll forward to you as well.
Perfect, thank you.
It was like at the very beginning of the chat.
Yeah, I think it would be good if as many people in the Regional Planning Commission could be on that call as, as possible. This is major. It's going to have an impact for decades.
I did, I did find that, Paul. Thank you, and I plan to, too.
Okay, is there any other items to cover this morning?
Paul, I just want to heap one more ounce of praise on the Health Department. Something that, that was sent to me that's worth noting is that the Athens County City Health Department, city, county Health Department, whatever, as of last, a week ago Wednesday, had vaccinated 59.4% of all individuals age 80-plus, which ranks number three in the state of Ohio, number three countywide. So that's, again, one more example of what a great job they're doing with 18 individuals, but also a lot of assistance with HCOM and Ohio University. So it's just worth noting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, if there's nothing else on, to cover this morning, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, everybody, our next meeting is scheduled for next, March 11th, 2021, and I believe for the March meeting, we will have to have a nomination process for President, Vice President, et cetera, for the Regional Planning Commission. So we will put that on the agenda. And thank you all. Have a great evening or have a great morning.